She's here.
She's here.
Okay.
Why do you hate the earth so much, John?
The what?
Why do you hate the earth so much?
I'm pro-green. More pro-some-green than other green.
Yeah, well, sort of. Yeah. I know the person.
One of my great-grandchildren doesn't have any place to...
I think I said it pretty well. It's like, well, you know what?
Lower.
Got that.
And lower.
Thumbs up there.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. It's actually 4:05, August 28th. Roll call, please. Mayor Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Okay, if everyone will stand for Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, then we might, in a moment of silence, think about the people in South Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 3.1, the month of September 2017, is National Recovery Month in the city of Salina. Don Green, senior recovery coach, will read the proclamation.
Hi, everybody. Don Green, Central Kansas Foundation. Proclamation of the city of Salina proclaiming September as National Recovery Month. Join the voices of recovery, visible, vocal, and valued. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas in 2012, two and a half million people aged 12 or older received specialty treatment for substance use disorder, and more than 31.6 million adults aged 8 or older received mental health services, according to the 2011 National Survey on Drug and Health. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions more who need help, and whereas on October 1st, 2013, as a result of the Affordable Care Act, more than 11 million uninsured individuals with behavioral health needs will become eligible for affordable insurance coverage for their treatment needs. According to the 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, we must ensure that all these intervals are successfully enrolled into coverage, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse, Mental and Health Services Administration, the White House Office on National Drug Control Policy, and Central Kansas Foundation of the Pathfinder Recovery Center invite all residents of Salina to participate in National Recovery Month.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And what activities do you have?
I'd like to invite you all. We're having our annual party, and this year we're going to be, we're going to be at Oakdale Park, 730 Oakdale Drive, Salina, Kansas, Saturday, September 9th, from the time from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Join us for food, games, prizes, and lots of fun. Join the voices for recovery.
Is it going to be at Oakdale, did you say?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm just making a note of that. Hope to be able to attend. Thank you very much, and if you'll come up, I'll give you your proclamation. You're signed the proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Item 3.2. Item 3.2, Joan Rothzla with the Salina Area Workers Coalition will read the Labor Day proclamation.
Hello again.
Aye.
This one's short. Whereas Labor Day was declared a national holiday by President Grover Cleveland in 1894, designating it a day to recognize and pay tribute to the economic and social achievements made to society by all workers, and whereas the city of Salina and Saline County exemplify what can be accomplished by the efforts and talents expended by generations of hard-working men and women, and whereas it is vital that the economic development of Salina and Saline County include its working people in the benefits thereof. To that end, the Salina Area Workers Coalition urges pursuit of those industries that have demonstrated respect and appreciation of their employees. Therefore, do I read this part?
Yes.
It is appropriate that I, K. Crawford, mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim September 4th, 2017, as a time to celebrate and honor the labor of all our citizens.
Okay. Tell us about your activities. I know some things you're doing.
Well, we've got something coming up. We have a Labor Day event every year since 2012, we hope is a lot of fun, and this year, I don't know where the camera is, but we are, we're having a Mother Jones reenactor come to Ad Astra the evening of Labor Day, Monday, the 4th. Doors open at 6:00, and her show starts at 7:00, and she is a professional actor coming from Chicago to do this. She's part of Woman Lore, performing women in history, and so she will be reenacting Mother Jones, talking about the Mill Children's March, which in 1903, there were a bunch of mills in southeast Pennsylvania where the employees were on strike to lower their working hours from 60 to 55 hours a week, and about 10% of those strikers were children, some of them under the age of 10. So they marched approximately 100 miles from the Philadelphia area to New York to President Teddy Roosevelt's home to have an audience with him, and he refused to see them at that time, but that was to draw attention to the plight of child labor and poor working conditions and that sort of thing. So it should be entertaining and educational as well.
Historical, too.
Yes.
That's terrible working conditions in some of those places in those years.
Right.
Probably still is.
Exactly. And I'd like to point out that overcoming some of those things like child labor, unsafe working conditions, starvation wages, things like that, overcoming those things, those conditions, were won over many, many decades, and we are, you know, we achieved a kind of a best place maybe in that area in, you know, after World War II, the '50s, '60s. Those gains were very hard-won. People died for those things, and so that's something to remember and, you know, not forget our history so that we don't repeat it.
Right. Thank you very much, Joan.
Thank you.
And if you'll step up here, I'll give you your proclamation. Okay, we have Citizens Forum now. Anyone wishing to express anything to the commission, please come forward, give your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Solon, 712 West South Street here in Salina. I'd just like you to ask for a review of the policies for enforcement of the yard ordinances. The way it stands right now, the first time you get a certified letter in 10 days to correct things. Apparently, the second time, you get no notice at all. They just send somebody out to take care of stuff. I think we could at least do some sort of courtesy where they put a post-it note in your mailbox and give you a day to take care of it, something like that. I understand you may not want to go through the whole process again, but courtesy would be nice. That happened to my sister, and the contractor charged $50 for mowing the lawn, which include edging and trimming. I don't think edging and trimming is probably required under the ordinances, so I don't know if that should be part of it. And then the fees for administration were $125, which is, you know, about five hours of work at $25 an hour. That seems a little bit more like a fine than a fee to me. That seems like a lot of work for just administering somebody to come out and mow a yard, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay. If there's no one else, we'll go on to, we have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so we'll go on to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 21st, 2017. Item 6.2, approve resolution number 17-7474, authorizing the city manager to renew a three-year city right-of-way mowing contract with Fox Lawn and Landscaping. Item 6.3, approve resolution number 17-7478, appointing members to various boards and commissions. Item 6.4, consider recommendations for grant fund allocation to local agencies for the 2017 Kansas Emergency Solutions Grant, and approve resolution number 17-7479, implementing a conflict of interest policy for the emergency solutions grant program.
Okay, is there anything any commissioner would like to pull off the consent agenda?
Item 6.4, please.
I also just wanted to bring up one thing under item 6.3. Last week, we appointed quite a number of people to boards and commissions, and today we are appointing a few more. I just consider boards and commissions very serious part of city business, and when boards and commissions meet, to me, it's just democracy in action. I really commend everyone for their voluntary service on boards and commissions, and if there are any of those who apply and for some reason are not attending meetings, we do not have to wait until August or January to appoint those people. We can reappoint those at any time, and we want to always show our appreciation to those who dutifully serve their boards and commissions, and we don't want to see boards that are not a meeting as often as they should because of lack of people. We will get people appointed. Okay, if I can have a...
And I may be able to say, is the action on 6.4 to discuss only the conflict of interest policy, or does it have anything to do with the amounts awarded?
Upon notification that we had received the award as described, one of the conditions of our acceptance of that award was adoption of a conflict of interest policy. So the action before you is adopting the conflict of interest policy such that we may accept the funds as awarded. So it's two actions, the conflict of interest and acceptance of the funds as described in the staff report.
So we're discussing the allocation of funds as well?
Yes. The allocation is actually set by the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. It's not at our discretion, but it's more the acceptance as...
Because my question had solely to deal with the allocation, not with the policy. If that's the case, I'll withdraw, removing from the...
If you take this action today as a body, you would be accepting the award of those funds as described and allocated. So if you have questions about allocation, it would be appropriate to bring it up now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I think Sue Klein could answer that. Shall we go ahead and...
So we'll pull six.
Well, part of the discussion, yeah. If you want to pull that, then we're going to have to...
We can pull that and then entertain a motion on...
We're going to be voting on two or three different things versus just one.
I'll entertain a motion on the rest of the consent...
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda items as presented with 6.4 removed.
Second. Okay. I have a motion in a second to approve items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll go back to 6.4. And did you have questions of Sue Klein?
Yeah, and it's just really one question. I noticed, obviously with the award being less than what the sum of what agencies requested, the amounts awarded were less than that desired. The street outreach for the Ashby House was awarded nothing. Most of the other, well, all the other categories, if they weren't funded fully, were funded at a reduced amount. This was the only, I guess, well, there was another street outreach from Central Kansas Mental Health Center. I was just curious as to why none of this request from Ashby House was awarded.
Okay. Mr. Scragg was correct that the allocation comes directly from Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. In years past, the city used to have a role in allocating funds. We no longer do. What's requested and what's awarded typically runs about 50%. There's no guarantee that you'll get anything allocated for a particular request. In the case of street outreach for Ashby House, they did request some funding for that category, and they received none. KHRC will, if we formally request, they will entertain, providing more detailed information about how they reached that decision, but I am aware from conversations with James Chisholm with KHRC that they look at the continuum of care, they look at what the community is doing, and they try not to duplicate services, and past comments and discussions with James, he's indicated that the street outreach component of the Ashby Services was not as strong as it really should be for him to fully support continuing that. Now, James is not the only one who makes the decision. It's a board of at least four people, a committee that looks at the application. So we could find out more about that if you're curious, but that's kind of how it works.
Well, I'd be curious more for the benefit of Ashby House to learn how it might present its request in a stronger fashion next year.
Right. We're going to be meeting with all the local agencies tomorrow, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Brian Anderson yet. I suspect he may question that, but I also know that that's, it was a very small part of their total need was street outreach. So if he wanted to look at how they're doing street outreach and perhaps approach it a little differently, maybe present a different program next year when they request funds, they're always, that's always an opportunity that they can take is to request something a little different.
So there will be feedback going back to each agency?
We, yeah, we will ask tomorrow if they have any questions about this, about the funding. They are all aware of what they're getting. They've already been notified of this conditional award, and if they have any questions or concerns, they are very vocal. They're not shy. So we keep in touch with them, and so far, nobody has questioned the allocation.
Thank you very much.
And I think an important component that you mentioned is that they look at it, and they, they don't want to duplicate, and I think it's important to point out that it did look like there was some street outreach funded just with the program that was applied for by Central Kansas Foundation.
Right.
So somebody in the community did receive funding for a portion of that street outreach funding. It just wasn't, I think it was $2,500 versus $13,000 for...
If you'll notice, Central Kansas Mental Health requested $2,100, and they did get $2,100.
Right.
I have a feeling that they probably would have received much less had there been some allocation to another agency for that same category. So I think what they probably did was just shift the focus for Central Kansas Mental Health to provide some street outreach.
Sue, what, now, I probably should know this, but what is HMIS?
It is, I always have to look, because it's an acronym that doesn't, it's Homeless Management Information System. It's a required, it's how they keep track of data.
So it's, it's funding for computer stuff?
It's funding to do, to purchase hardware?
Yeah.
To do training for staff to make the data entry that's required, and to purchase software if needed to do that. But there's a MacLink software program that all the agencies use except D-VAC because they have confidentiality levels that are much higher.
Right.
But they are required to input data into a specific database.
Okay. Does that answer the question? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to approve item 6.4.
Madam Mayor, move approval of resolution number 17-7479, adopting the required emergency solutions grant conflict of interest policy.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve allocation to local agencies for the Kansas Emergency Solutions Grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Administration, please.
You didn't have to take two actions on that one?
Yeah, we need to, we need to accept it.
We do. We need another action on that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it starts with the conflict of interest policy followed by the acceptance of funding.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the conditional grant award for the 2017 Emergency Solutions Grant from the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Now we'll go to administration. Thank you. I didn't see that.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 17-10896, approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital improvements located at the Salina Regional Airport and Airport Industrial Center, and approving a contract between the city and the Board of Directors of the Salina Airport Authority.
Okay. Ordinance number 17-10896 was passed on first reading on August 21st, 2017. Since that time, no comments have been received. As was noted during this discussion preceding first reading, paragraph 6 of the contract has been supplemented by the addition of language indicating that the city's reimbursement of the Salina Airport Authority temporary note shall be made no later than July 25th, 2019. Okay, I'll entertain a motion on that.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption on second reading, ordinance number 17-10896.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please. Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Crawford? Aye. 7.2?
Item 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 17-10895, designating certain streets as main trafficways pursuant to KSA 12-685.
Ordinance number 17-10895 was passed on first reading on August 21st, 2017. Since that time, no comments have been received. I entertain a motion on ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I would move for approval on second reading, ordinance number 17-10895.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second on second reading, ordinance number 17-10895. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Mayor Crawford?
Yes.
Aye. I think everybody said aye or here. Okay, 7.3, please.
Item 7.3, resolution number 17-7476, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the purchase of a dedication monument in honor of Mrs. Karen M. Graves for her local service to and for the city of Salina.
Good afternoon, mayor and commission members. On March 20th, 2017, Commissioner Hodges brought forth the dedicated naming memorial in honor of Karen Graves for contributions to the city of Salina. This would be called the Karen M. Graves Plaza and would have a dedicated monument located on the north side of the Tony Pizza Event Center. There's no objection to this project from Spectra, our management company, for the project, nor any issue with the project from staff's perspective. The project cost of $4,995 will come from the general fund contingency line item. The proposed contractor submitted insurance requirement and is qualified to do the project. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
On this kind of project, do you usually just give these kind of things to memorial art? Are they the go-to person in Salina for these kinds of projects?
That I would not, I would not know. I simply...
Kind of bidding situation on the...
No, sir, it's under the allotted amount for the, to go out to bid, so we just took the bid that we were given.
Tell you what, I'll, before we vote on this, I'll just make a full disclosure, and just, this is a good question by Commissioner Ryan, but one of the things that I did, did in cooperation with Commissioner Hodges on this thing was to look at different alternatives for perhaps working with a scheme that was aesthetically pleasing for that plaza, and actually, the, sort of, the arrangement was made with Mr. Maine, I can't remember what the memorial sign, Tim Maine, what the, what the actual company name is there, but, you know, it, we had, we had a design, and it, and it was tasteful and everything else, but I had just asked him at one point in the process, hey, throw out any ideas that you might think would, you know, be nice and be appropriate and so on, and fully waiting for like sticker shock to kick in and everything else, and actually, we're quite pleasantly surprised at how affordable it is, how the earlier ideas ranged from limestone from Clay Center area to granite sheathing that was taken off of the bridge out here. So I think one of the things that I can truly say that is if, if there's an idea that somehow cost was cast to the wind and no, no consideration given for really making this work on a, on a shoestring budget, I can assure you that the approach was to get, get the price, at a good price, and quite frankly, I won't speak for Commissioner Hodges, but I was pretty surprised at how nice this will look, and I might also add that it, that it pays tribute to the former name of the building, the Bicentennial Center, by having some of that bicentennial, the logo of the bicentennial, the American Revolution Bicentennial incorporated into that, into the pedestal. So...
Could you, for those who can't see this map we have in a diagram, describe exactly which area is being renamed the Plaza, the Karen Graves Plaza?
Do you want to do that, or...
It's on the, it's on the north side of the building where the seating area is, where the, I believe, its limestone blocks sit. It's right there by the main entrance.
So the entire area will be the Graves Plaza?
Yes, sir. The sitting area, yes, sir.
The sitting, thank you.
Who has the pointer?
Dean's always got one.
There you go. Dean's the rescue.
Aim and shoot. Well, I have to get over there and see it myself. I'm not...
No, it's not it. That arrow's deceiving. That's not... You're right there.
This area right here.
Yeah. Right.
Thank you.
The monument itself, I hesitate to call it a monument, but the...
Marker?
The marker is black granite.
Correct. Correct, yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm, is there any other discussion?
I just have a short statement that I'd like to read because I think all of you know that I'm not very good at speaking extemporaneously. I'm very, very happy that we're at this point right now, and when Mayor Crawford and I were in the Tri-Rivers Fair Parade, she turned to me and said that she wasn't sure that the crowds that were waving to us really cared whether or not they got to see their city commissioners, and I agreed. to us really cared whether or not they got to see their city commissioners. And I agreed because what's one more elected official waving from a city vehicle, especially since it wasn't a vintage fire truck, right? Commissioner Davis?
Those of us who had to walk, we're not complaining about any type of city vehicle.
But then I said to Kay, it's important for all these people to see you. You may not think so, heck, they may not even think so, but by being out there, you show kids what a mayor looks like. A mayor can look like you, or can look like a doctor, or can look like your neighbor, but most importantly for girls and young women, a mayor can look like you. And this is something that you can do. Honoring Salina's first woman mayor feels like a validation of the contributions women have made to city government over the years. Not only today's honoree Karen Graves, but also Sidney Soderberg, Evelyn Maxwell, Kristen Gunn, Deborah Devine, Lucy Larson, Samantha Angel, Barb Shirley, and of course our own Mayor Crawford. Thank you. It was a team effort to put the Karen M. Graves Plaza together, and it's important to acknowledge the many people who have made it possible. Commissioner Blanchard for the idea itself and for his role in developing a design for the monument and its sighting at the Tony's Pizza Event Center. Tim Maine of Memorial Art Company contributed a great deal to this project as well, from practical design, material and installation suggestions, to a willingness to do this project at his cost. To Ron Rideout and Susan Trafton of Tony's Pizza Event Center, they were great in sharing information and updates about the project, to Schwan's Global Management. And also a big thank you to Schwan's Global for their generous support of the project. They've been very supportive from the get-go. City cooperation from many departments, Jim Koak of Public Works, Nancy Schuschler of Risk Management, Chris Cotton of Parks and Recreation, and City Manager Jason Gage for their encouragement and oversight. And finally, many thanks to the honoree herself, Karen Milner Graves. Thank you for your boundless energy and enthusiasm that were key in rallying fellow citizens to establish the Smoky Hill River Festival, the Smoky Hill Museum, Access Television, Play Day in the Park, K-State Polytechnic, and yes, the former Salina Bicentennial Center, now the Tony's Pizza Event Center. We honor you not only as Salina's first woman mayor, but also for your belief that anything is possible if we reach consensus and have a plan of action. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, and I agree with that because I remember she was a role model for me when Karen was, and that was, that was not that long ago. If you look at that board up there of how many mayors there've been, she's way down on the third row. So wasn't that, wasn't that, wasn't that long ago. So I agree with that and appreciate your work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I just need a motion to approve resolution number seventeen seventy-four seventy-six?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution seventeen seventy-four seventy-six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Okay. Development Business, eight point one.
Item eight point one, acknowledge receipt of a constitutional economic development tax exemption application from the Salina Economic Development Corporation requesting a property tax exemption for a research and development facility.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The city clerk's office is in receipt of an application that's been filed by Salina Economic Development Corporation requesting a ten-year property tax exemption for a research and development facility known as the Bulk Solids Innovation Center. And we have attached to our report there a copy of the city's property tax exemption policy. And that lays out the various procedures as well as the application of the formulas for various locations and property tax exemption requests. Step one in our local process is to, first of all, acknowledge receipt that the application's been filed and then to refer the application to the city manager and staff for an analysis of the costs and benefits, and then authorize staff to schedule a public hearing to consider the application. We are in receipt of that. We are working towards completing the requirements for a complete cost benefit analysis. And upon completion of that, and we're satisfied that it is complete, then we're requesting your authorization to schedule a public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is that we would notify the other tax exempt entities, the school district and Saline County, of the request because they would be affected as well by a property tax exemption. And then the, the actual merits of the application would be considered at that public hearing. But this is simply step one in the process towards working to that public hearing. So I don't have, and this isn't the point, to go into the merits of the details of the application, but I'll stand for any questions you have about the local process.
Questions? Just, just to confirm, our only action today is just acknowledging receipt, right?
Right.
And then the next step is the analysis by staff?
Yes, and then also authorizing us when that analysis is complete to go ahead and schedule the public hearing because we'll have to give advanced notice of that hearing to the other taxing entities when that date is determined.
Just a quick question on, made reference to the policy adopted by resolution. Seems like we're in the review procedure stage. There's quite a bit of meat prior to the part that we're actually at now. Am, am I right to assume that we're kind of where we, we're kind of picking this thing up midstream because this is a process that's typically done before a building is constructed?
Yes, one of the things, and we'll, we'll get into that when we get to the merits of that, but this policy allows for deviations to be requested from this policy resolution. And obviously, you're aware that the building is already constructed. It's not being contemplated. So that will be one of the deviations that you will consider at the public hearing. But the, the order of events here is different than a, a normal property tax exemption which is filed in anticipation of a project, not after a project has already been completed.
Right.
But that will be a discretionary item from you in the future hearing as to whether you want to deviate from your policy.
Okay. This is a question for, for either Mike or, or Jason. Is there any, is there any value in having any set of things that, there's, I have a list of certain things that I'd be interested in when I come to make that decision. Would those be better to wait until to see if those were part of the application? Or is the application, is it a, is it a pretty standard application? Or are they looking for, are they making justifications based on maybe what some of our concerns might be?
That's a good question. I won't, the, the application form is standard. I wouldn't call it a standard application because of what Mr. Andrew just mentioned. And also, when you, when you get to it later, you'll find there are other deviations that would be anticipated. So I look at Greg to see if he feels it'd be appropriate to vocalize today at least any, any pieces of information you think would be helpful or essential for you in considering it so they could, they could be prepared to enter that into the conversation at the date of the public hearing.
As, as you probably noted in looking at your item for today, I would describe this as a circumstance that the policy anticipates, but it is certainly unique, I believe, in terms of any prior application you've had for this constitutional abatement. And there's a number of factors that, that prompt that. My sense is, I mean, the applicant I would expect would be fully, or attempt to be responsive to, you know, if, if there's information that you all know in anticipation of the public hearing that you would like to have that is not presently available, I, I would expect they would welcome knowing that in advance, if that's helpful.
Okay, and, and you know what, I'll just, I'll just stick to asking a couple of questions I had about the application, which is what we're considering accepting. And from there, I think probably, I'm sure they'll probably hit some of the other things. But the two things that, that I, that I noticed, one of the questions asked if there was any state, State of Kansas Department of Commerce participation in this, and I do recall from the entire process of this that, and even on K-State's website for the Bulk Solids, it lists Department of Commerce along with City of Salina, Saline County, Economic Development Administration, federal government as partners. And so is there some sort of partnership that doesn't include participate, some sort of, I mean, how, how do they define partnership and participation? Because the answer was no on the application, and that's a, I suppose, for a state issue, but it did seem to kind of, I was under the assumption that there was, that they were a partner in this. So that's one thing, not necessarily looking for an answer, but it'd be nice to have clarification on that when that comes back.
Just to be sure, we're clear, you're asking about what, basically what role the Kansas Department of Commerce may have played?
Correct, because it was asked if they participated, and the answer was no. And so if there's some sort of qualifying piece of that equation, that would be good to know. The other thing is, is that it mentioned that it had associated with this, bear with me for just a second. It was about the, oh, it says number nine, new business, D, the number of jobs actually created as a result of the business commencing operations, one-hundred-and-twenty-two jobs created and retained. And then it says C, attached economic development data, tab G and tab H, and I couldn't find tab G or tab H anywhere. So I'd just kind of like to have some sort of clarification on that as to what those one-hundred-and-twenty-two jobs created were and where. And I'm assuming those are tab, on tab G and H, but I don't, I was unable to find those. And then just recognizing that this is a somewhat unique facility and does have three anchors, K-State, Vortex, and Catron, and just kind of curious about if those jobs were kind of related with, with those entities or with, or with the Bulk Solids in particular. So those are pretty just, those are just the things that kind of, I had questions on that, that I'm sure would be more helpful to me when, if they could address some of those things in the, in the future.
Those references that, or reference to tabs were in a report that they had to file with the Economic Development Administration. And so when the public hearing is held, the full body of that will be attached. But those references, the tabs were to reporting that they had to make with the Economic Development Administration and in terms of the grant that they received from EDA. And so the, the, the blue sheet that was done, that was related to the matching funds from the city of Salina referred to the balance of the construction funds from EDA, the Kansas Department of Commerce and the private sector. We will comb through their information to see if we can come up with a dollar amount of the contribution from Kansas Department of Commerce because at first pass, I didn't see a dollar amount associated with that, but that will be a homework item for us.
Okay.
But that, that information, that explains the one-hundred-and-twenty-two spinoff jobs is in their report to the Economic Development Administration. We will include that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we acknowledge receipt of the constitutional economic development tax exemption application from the Salina Economic Development Corporation requesting a property tax exemption for a research and development facility, the Bulk Solids Innovation Center.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to acknowledge receipt of a constitutional economic development tax exemption.
One question.
Yes.
Does that motion also have to include direction to set up the public meeting?
I think that'd be best, authorize the scheduling of the, of the public hearing.
Okay, you want to amend?
Blanchard wanted to.
He'll amend. Add to the motion.
Okay, amend that to refer the application to the city manager for analysis of the costs and benefits of granting such an exemption and authorizing the staff to schedule a public hearing to consider the application.
Second again? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Appreciate that. That was the beat of the motion.
Okay, and we're on item eight point two, last.
Item eight point two, authorize the mayor to sign the final plat of the Dakota addition, a replat of lots one through eight, block fifteen of the Elmdale addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. City staff has been working with Sean Kindlesbarger, who purchased some property at the west end of West Elm Street. And the particular property in question was laid out and platted in eighteen eighty-seven, and the current layout is obsolete as far as current construction goes. And Mr. Kindlesbarger is replating the area into four lots, three sixty-foot wide lots and one one-hundred-foot lot in order to market those to interested contractors and small businesses. The property is zoned I-2 light industrial already. Elm Street is a, is a paved street with curb and gutter. Chicago Street is not, but there's ability to access all of the lots from Elm Street. And the comprehensive plan indicates this as a future employment area. So his, his plan for these lots is consistent with the zoning and the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission voted at their August fifteenth meeting to approve his plan for taking the eight thirty-five-foot lots and repackaging them into four more usable building lots. And so there are no additional dedications that are being made that you need to accept at today's meeting. The right-of-way for Elm Street in Chicago will remain as they are, and there's a sixteen-foot alley at the south end. So there's no new easement or right-of-way dedications. So the action we are requesting today would be a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the plat for the proposed Dakota addition. Be happy to address any questions you have about the location.
Yeah, would you just, would you pretty much characterize this as similar to the reason we were looking at over there east of Ohio when, when that neighborhood?
Look at Van Horn Street in that, that area.
Kind of trending more towards I-2 and, and out of more of that residential.
There are some homes in the area, but if you've, you've driven over there, it has an industrial feel to it. It's, it's near the concrete plant there. So there's, historically, it was used, that roofing warehouse that's in the corner there is no longer there. The site has been completely cleared. And so his plan is, is to take that and market it to small local businesses for new building sites. So it's, it's basically a repackaging of the existing lots into more usable sizes.
I would call that infill.
I believe this would be.
Sounds good to me.
Great.
Okay, any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thanks.
I entertain a motion to authorize me to sign the final plat.
Madam Mayor, I would move to authorize you to sign the plat of the proposed Dakota addition as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to authorize me to sign the final plat of the Dakota addition for lots one through eight, block fifteen of the Elmdale addition to the city of Salina. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Okay, go to other business.
Hey, if you're, if you're waiting for them to powell, I just want to thank Commissioner Hodges for. I just want to thank Commissioner Hodges for the work that you did on helping to coordinate that item with Mayor Graves, and also for your prepared remarks, that they were very good remarks.
Thanks.
Very good.
What we call filler.
I'm just looking at this very efficient handling of paper by all these left-handed people sitting in a row here, and it just makes it very easy. Madam Mayor, to, and move the city commission recess into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with legal counsel pursuant to the attorney-client privileged communications with legal counsel exception, KSA 45-7319B2, for 30 minutes. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:30.
Second.
Sorry, second. Will we have any business?
That is a good question. I honestly don't know.
No action is anticipated.
Motion and a second to adjourn, or to move to executive session.
We don't want to adjourn, just adjourn.
See, I did it right this time.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.